I know it's a minute early, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
First order of business is the approval of the agenda for today's meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Could I make a comment on the agenda?
Discussion, please.
Discussion. Basically, I just want to thank the staff members who are here supporting the meeting. Don, Linda, Keith.
Wake up.
Sorry.
Did you unmute that? Pull those microphones closer to you. Now, you're good now.
So I just wanted to thank the staff who are here to support this meeting, rearrange their Saturdays so we wouldn't have to rearrange our schedules. The chief, Keith Calabrese, Linda, Debbie, John, I think Josh, and Julie. So thank you all for supporting our meeting.
So noted. Other comments? CNN, I'll call the question, all those in favor of accepting the agenda as presented for today's meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Please record a unanimous vote. Next item of business is approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the July 27 regular meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. CNN, I'll call the question, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the July 27 regular meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Please record a unanimous vote. Undertain a motion to accept the minutes from the August 23 special meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. CNN, I'll call the question, all those in favor of accepting the minutes from the August 23 special meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Record a unanimous vote. I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes from the August 25 organizational meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. CNN, I'll call the question, all those in favor of accepting the minutes from the August 25 organizational meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Extensions? Please record a unanimous vote. Next order of business, president's remarks, one real quick. First of all, I want to welcome the new directors, Rakowski, Lacernick, and Jacobs. Thank you for your service to the Ocean Pines organization. I look forward to a successful year as we work and claw our way through all the issues that we address in our roles as directors for this organization. Next item of business, GM report, John Viola.
Okay, thank you Doug. All right, so first slide, the first slide, I just, we put a couple pictures there, I just wanted to open up with NFL Sunday at the grill. Those are pictures in the inside and the outside patio where we have a TV also. The place has been packed the last two weeks. There are specials, we're bringing in two more TVs to have all the football games, so please attend. Okay, so next slide, initiatives. Okay, I always open up with this. This is everything I'm going to talk about today, all initiatives, all constructive. We're not just about reporting variations to budget, which I am responsible to do per our scrolls, and I will do that. We are more than favorable numbers, which to me reflects the constructive approach by board, GM, and the team. I'm sure they're going to show you that now. So start off with the North Gate Bridge, turn the page. Turn the page, okay, so there's a picture, if anybody's gone over it recently, and several of you actually here today have, and I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on the lights. As far as I don't get streamlined, it's crisp. The new lights have four, as we, everything that we've said in the board meeting, the four ankle lights, which are new, and there'll be five lights on each side. And there we are, we are looking at other things as far as how we can spruce up that bridge. I'm working with the garden club, as well as some work groups, individuals that have some ideas. So if you do have some ideas, please send it to info@oceanpines.org, and we certainly can't guarantee it, but we'll certainly look at it. Okay, so the total cost, as you know, was around $46,000, $47,000. And work was completed Thursday night. Turn the page, roads. So on the roads, and you all know what we've done over the last four years since I've been here, we tried to do three, three miles a year. Basically, what I'm coming forward with today, I did get approval from the board on a prior board meeting. Actually, today I'm going to come forward with the bids, but I got approval in the budget with this. Here's all the roads that we will be doing over the next several weeks. It's going to come out to about three miles, but I'll do that during the request for the, for approval. The striping, I already got approval for that, it's around $20,000. If you've been, if you've been along Ocean Parkway, you could see Public Works basically cleaning up all the siding, getting ready for the striping. It'll be out for Space Control Company will do the work. And we have this special type of paint, everybody told me, with the reflective stuff in it. Drainage, Debbie's helping me out here. So while Debbie's doing that, let me just tell you about drainage. So again, I had got, we received approval from the board. This year, we doubled up what we did as far as the pipes, the main pipes, I'm talking about pipes that go under all our main roads. We didn't have to dig up the roads. The prices we got for this lining, and this is a proven process, we did it last year, we were very successful, so we doubled it this year. So Pelican Underground began pipe lining in August, phase one, listed all the roads, where they did it, the pipes, it was approximately $200,000. And then Muff's Landing, which was a big one, which I'm going to talk a little bit about, and I actually have a picture there, those are main pipes, so you look on the left, the picture's on the bottom. These pipes have come up before over the years. If I go back about six, seven years ago, we had problems there, we received estimates, I was on B&amp;F, one time we received estimates to replace and fix them, was $450,000. Another year, we got estimates of $650,000. The estimate for the 19 pipes, if I was to break it out between this 400, roughly 435,000 that we spent, comes out to about $20,000, $22,000, $25,000 per pipe. Do the math on that, I got four pipes, we did it for $100,000. I didn't incur other costs, but way, way favorable to the estimates we got in the past, and we didn't have to dig up the roads. So if you just look over here where Debbie is, that's an example, I did bring an example last year, a smaller one, when we did the smaller pipes, but this is what the Pelican Underground company did, they came in, a certain process with this, it's proven, and it's probably going to last longer than the pipes would have. Okay? So it's successful, we have, we've done 30-something major pipes on the major roads over the last two years. It's a big one. Aquatics, so aquatics, we heard a lot, first of all, it was another successful season as far as I'm concerned, aquatics and all our amenities, and that's what I'm going to report today. But on aquatics, yes, we did have closings, yes, we were short lifeguards, like everybody else, yes, we made every effort possible to hire lifeguards, yes, I have favorability in budget, yes, we'll try to increase what we could pay for the lifeguards. You will hear this when we do the budget process, which is starting actually this week. We are looking at that as well with every other position we have. There are mandated increases for minimum wage, I believe it's up to $15 this year. Obviously, that takes a hit on the budget, but we are trying to see for each position that we haven't been able to fill, what we do need to do. We are looking at the police, working on that as we speak, and, but every other position. So yes, we are looking at that, and yes, I certainly want to fully staff these pools, but please, keep in mind, everybody throughout the country is going through this. The main pools, Yacht Club and Beach Club, were open 100%. The other three pools, anywhere from 60, 75%, they were open. There's some numbers there on how many guests and how many people came in, so even with that, we had big time numbers. Okay, and as I mentioned, we will be reviewing and assessing during the next budget process, along with the memberships and possibility of lifeguard shortages next year. We've also posted, there's anywhere we did post, but somebody asked me for what we did on communication this year on it, it was over a half of communications that the communication and aquatics team and myself and Info listed. Okay, next racket sports, a lot happening there, same thing, same approach, same strategic plan that we did with golf, started three, four years ago, where we went in there, looked at the infrastructure and maintenance two years ago, we did the fences, we fixed everything we possibly could, until we had to bring in somebody for the renovation of the, and maintenance of the pickleball courts that are existing right now. That work is, is going on as we speak, it is major, it's approximately $75,000 of work, it's badly needed. I believe we have the right company in there, it's the same company that built the new pickleball courts, which we just completed at the end of August. So a lot of good stuff there, we want to get the infrastructure right, we want to get the maintenance right, we want to make this a good experience for everybody, and that's all on track. I do have to try to get that done by October 5. ATC is telling me, telling Debbie, telling Eddie, that they will have it completed. But the maintenance we're doing there, or the renovation, is the best we've done so far. So hopefully it works, and I'm not here next year on the racket sports. Marina gas pump line, if there was something at the beginning of the busy season this year where I thought we might have a situation with the budget, we did have, we had, well, use the word situation again, but we had a situation there where we did have some problems with the pipes, did have a leak, credit to the team down there, everybody act, and credit to the measures and safety measures that we had, everything was contained immediately. But with that said, we had to shut down several of the pipelines, but we were able to divert and utilize at least two pumps, and we were able to pump all summer. We met demand, I don't believe we, well, from the numbers and stats even compared to last year, I don't believe we, we lost any, any customers, but we had a very good year, and we will be over the next couple of months, and I'm coming forward to the board today for construction that we need to do on the pipes to meet safety, to meet new regulations, which we would have had to do anyway this year, because there were mandated new regulations which we would not have met. The only thing I want to say on this is this, is back, I'm being told back in around 2012, 2013, the team came forward and said that these pipes, that whole process from land out to where the pumps are, needed to be replaced, and I guess, for whatever reasons, it wasn't. So, and the reason I'm pointing that out is this, they made that decision, so it's fine, it doesn't, you know, at this point, we would have had to do this anyway. And all this work we're going to do is in the DMA study, and is all up there for replacement, but the point I'm making is, everything this team is doing, the boards are doing, and everything else, a lot of it is we're going back, and I believe, I don't know who it was, but I think it was Frank, Doug, that, you know, coined this phrase, deferred maintenance or whatever, everything we're doing, we're going back and doing stuff also, for stuff that should have been done over the years. All right, so it's 60 days, we have a plan, I'm coming forward in the next section for that. Administration building renovations, it's in the budget, it was approved. If you've been in the admin building, you know, outside of the lobby, everything is pretty much up for replacement, the HVAC system needs to be replaced, as well as the floors. So we're basically doing the floors, the ceiling, the HVAC system, and painting. So we believe, we're doing this in-house, Eddie is going to work on this as an initiative, nobody will fill in as running Public Works for this short time, that we're using part of our team to do this renovation. We will bring in the companies that we normally use, that are, that we outsourced the work to, and have had success with, whether it's the clubhouse, any other maintenance, but we will be using Prestige and some other people, because we don't have all the painters and everything. 120, but I'll talk more about that, 125,000. Turn the page. All right, so this is, so Ocean Pines Volunteer Fire Department Work Group, I have a lot of dates here, a lot of stuff, but basically is this, I was tasked by the board, I don't know, two months ago, whatever, to prepare, to reach out, to start, to get a, an RFP for a fundraising company, to obviously do funds for the, for the Ocean Pines Volunteer Fire Department. I put together a team, the team's listed below. I, to me, like all the work groups I have, very impressive, I'm glad to be a part of it. Ted Maroney, leading this team, doing an exceptional job, as well as everybody else on it. Dave Van Gaspak, Ocean Pines Volunteer Fire Department is on the team, and then names that you recognize that have been on other construction or other type of work groups for me and for us. Frank Brown, Josh Davis, Pete, Marvin, Eddie, I believe Marty Clark will be joining that team. Marty has sent me a lot of questions, and one of the things I want to highlight on this is, we've received a lot of questions from many, we have gotten the answers from, whether we do it, or it's mostly from the Volunteer Fire Department group, Dave, that is posted by Josh on the website on the news, he has sent out a communication, it's a fluid document. We encourage the questions, we encourage, you know, and some of the answers may change over time, but I believe the team has done an excellent job responding to all the questions. So please send your questions to info@oceanpines.org, and Josh will take care of it. So there are some dates, so the reason I, what I'm bringing in here is this, we have the, we've taken an extra step on this, that we've been told is really needed when you go for a fundraising company, that you really need a consultant, you need a feasibility study. Brought in Pete, Pete's had background, he has worked on this type of stuff, between him and Josh and Ted, everybody has found people that have done this type of work up and down, the East Coast here, they've been meeting with people that have done it, they've been very generous with their time with us, giving us information, explaining to us, you know, their experiences, how to go about that. So what I have today is to let everybody know, we're going forward, we're going to issue an RFP, we'll respond to the questions during October, around the middle of October, the proposals will do at the end of October, we'll do an evaluation, and this is for this feasibility study and this consultant that will help us with the next stage, which would be to do an RFP for the fundraising company. I will update the board with a recommendation from the team, whatever that board meeting is somewhere in November, and there I will ask for approval, and I, you know, we will have three bids where the team recommended. That's where we would be there, but just to put this all into perspective is this, you all know about this by now, the fire department received grants with input from Mary Beth and Wayne, everybody, they did a great job on that, they have about a million, three in grants, another 300,000. So we have two years to act, well, they have two years to act on those grants, so that gives us about another year and a half, and then once those grants are initiated, we have seven years to pull on the money. So we're looking at this with the fundraising, we'll probably start in, you know, five or six months, and that'll give us over a year to fundraise, which was our plan from the beginning, because we wouldn't even be able, if you told me today to start on this construction, to get, get a construction team in there and everything, it's going to take at least a year and a half. So the good thing is your team, our team, this team, they are actually working on that now, this RFP is done, the other RFP, basically, of course, we'll deal with the consultant feasibility study there, and update on there, come in, I'll ask Ted to come in and update also. But we already, we're using Frank, we're already looking at some ideas to try to, also answer the questions have, people have, with different things as far as the firehouse, so, a lot of this we can do in-house in the beginning, right? That's, turn the page. Mailboxes, you all know how I feel on the mailboxes, and mailboxes need to be done, we're doing it, Linda's doing it, she's running that for me, along with Eddie, Clint, people from Public Works, we've made some good progress, the biggest thing on this was getting the material with everything else, and if you are in business today or doing anything, it's very difficult getting material. So we did, we got the pedestals, we had to replace some of the mailbox clusters, there's an example below, oh, I'm sorry, actually, Linda was supposed to do this, and we're working on that. I am going to come forward today for some money for this, but I can tell you this, we're already up around $100,000, $150,000 committed by this board and the team to get these mailboxes up to speed. So it is happening, we have cleaned them, there's work to be done with the, with the foundation pads also, sorry, Lou. Okay, Lou's going to tell you about some dashboard stuff, sorry.
Okay, CPI violations, we initiated 54 violations, closed at 46. Fortunately, we had to send 13 to legal this month due to clients, but we did go to four in the month of August. As far as work orders, there's 112 new work orders with 138 closed out, 178 still open, with them being the majority of drainage and grounds and landscaping still open. And as far as customer service, Ocean Pines is still bustling, 151 emails and, the month of August.
All right, right away. All right, financials, I'm just watching the time too. Okay, the financials, same format, thank you to Steve Phillips and his team, and all the direct reports, they review everything monthly, everything is reviewed. So if you just, what I'm trying to do here is just give you highlights of the month and meet the standards that are in our bylaws that I have to present. So if you look for the month, we're favorable to budget $161,000. But again, I want to talk about, it's not just about favorability, I want to tell you about what we're doing and what's causing it, and I'll do that when I get to the year today. So for month, favorable $161,000. Year-to-date, just shy of $700,000, favorable to a budget that was, I believe, lowered last year, about $100. All right, let's go to the, to the favorite, the month of August slide, if everybody can see it up there, $161,000. Let me break it down the way I'm supposed to, and let me just give you some highlights to it. So there's, there's the breakout, if you could see it there, if you're not, I'll just try to read them. Yacht Club was favorable, $35,000. I got to tell you this, Yacht Club, the margins, we had a good year last year, the margins, Steve and I went through that with Ralph, their margins are good, with everything going on, I have to say, credit to that team down there, but the margins are good, we didn't need, we didn't miss a beat down there, place was packed all the time, and I was talking to Ralph the other day, I think they got 18 banquet, somebody sent me an email or something about, you know, where's the banquets or whatever, and I can tell you this, they got 18 banquets coming up, and this is banquet season. Golf ops and maintenance, we continue to show great numbers at golf, golf operations, maintenance there, there is favorability, 33,000, I do, there may be some timing there on some expenses, so we're just trying to look into that, but, you know, operating on all cylinders, Beach Club, favorable, that's strong gear there, we kept the pool open there, one goes with the other, and we've been very successful, and I believe it adds to the Ocean Pines experience. Recompor's favorable there, there is some timing there, Debbie just told me there may be some expenses that will be coming through, but still, we go through her numbers every, every month, Debbie sits down with me, she's doing a really solid job as far as expense management, her programs are packed, they're packed more than the space she has, she has waiting lists, a lot of good work there. I can say this for everybody, aquatics, same thing, we talked about the closing, but still big time numbers, and I'm not just talking about financial numbers, I'm talking about the people that utilize the pools. Public Works, favorability, 14,000, some of that is timing, we have been, you can see they're working, a lot of these initiatives, pretty much every initiative here, Public Works is involved somehow, and they will break apart their, their resources to do the in-house renovation of the admin building. Beach Park and, what can I say? Admin GM office, okay, that number, I can explain that. So I have spoken about that in the past, where I think, so Linda was, you know, came up from another budget cost center, and it just wasn't reflected. So if you look at the year-to-date numbers now for the general, for this manager's office, it kind of balances out, but of course, we have that for the month because of the transfer, which is offset in the other departments that Steve transferred Linda from. There is an offset in one of them, so you don't see the number exactly, because last year we had a lot of money coming in on revenue, sales, certificates, we did budget a little higher for it this year, and obviously, it's down now. Okay, so that's pretty much it, that's the month, the month, pretty much, everything I said there reflects for the, for the year-to-date. One thing I do want to point out, if somebody, and I know some of you do, and if you do the same, if you're looking at the Yacht Club numbers, let me just highlight this, if you look at the Yacht Club and you compare it to last year, you're going to say, hey, John, you're down. So we're not really down, I try to be consistent with everything we do, Steve's with there, with that with me, but it's this, last year, we were showing good numbers, we didn't start booking the bonus, and there is a bonus for the Madawatt company. Steve, we are booking it now. So if you look at that number, you compare it to last year, that difference actually is a number that we would have booked next month, or started booking next month for the bonus, so we're crewing for the bonus for them, we're confident that they'll make these numbers by the end of the year, and if you all know, and you've heard me before, I crafted, the board obviously approved with Ralph, that contract, and there's no doubt in my mind that that's a win-win contract for Ocean Pines and for the Madawatt companies. At the end of the day, you'll probably see, like last year, it was pretty much, we each made about the same amount of money. So it was 50/50, big win for everybody. Okay? I don't know if you can give me another slide, is there one more? All right, so just quick on the reserves, so this is the reserves at the year, at this current time. To me, this is a very important schedule, the next time I'm here, or, you know, maybe Steve or whatever, or Linda will probably do it, we'll give you a forecasted balance sheet or reserves, what we believe will be at the end of the year, which is very important. But you can see here, it's healthy, it's eight and a half million dollars in reserves, there will be some transfers that I asked the board approval for today, that'll change that number, but everything's good. You know, obviously, when you look on the balance sheet or whatever, and you see we have $18 million, a lot of that we need for operations, especially over the next six, six months. That's it.
Thank you, John. Any questions for John? Any none? Next item of business is treasurer's report, Monica.
Treasurer's report to firm our cash position and provide the association with an idea of where we are. As of August 31st, the association had $18 million in cash, approximately $15.1 million Bank of Ocean City in insured sweep account, approximately $1.1 million invested in CDRs, and the remaining $1.8 million in money market and other operating accounts. So noted on the slide, with the rates increasing, OPA transferred $10 million funds in the insured sweep accounts to Bank of Ocean City CDRs. Steve and his team are continually looking for opportunities to improve our rates, along with oversight from the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Monica. Next item on the agenda, public comments. Be advised, you must be a member of the Ocean Pines Association to make a public comment, and if you make a comment, state your name and address. The floor is now open for public comments. Yeah. Is that turned on?
It's blue.
Yeah, it's blue, okay.
So my name is Tiffany Knapp, and I'm thinking that, it's not turned on. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me okay? Yeah. Okay, so my name...
Just an FYI, that the speakers in this room will not work, this is meant for making sure that the people that are attending virtually can hear them, so please speak up, people in the room can hear.
My name is Tiffany Knapp, I'm the mother of Gavin Knapp, and I'm coming here today to ask you guys for consideration in renaming this skate park in honor of him, as the Gavin Knapp Skate Park. We have started a foundation, the Gavin Knapp Foundation, and we plan on doing amazing things here. I've sent this to the board a couple times, we would like to do improvements to the skate park over the years, as far as landscaping, just pretty much anything that we can think of. We thought of a couple ideas of putting solar power, phone charging stations there, extra seating, things of that nature, and so we're working together with our attorneys now for dedication to the skate park over the years, and the, and the foundation, to make sure that, you know, things go smooth, so that's what we're asking for today, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. So let's make an official recording in the minutes that the request has been made, and that we'll need to take that into consideration at a future board meeting. Everybody okay with that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comments?
Yeah, my name is Jack Leverine, I've been a Ocean Pines resident, six week in Willa Court, is my address. Been a resident 20 plus years, and I speak for my furry friends from the dog park who can't speak for themselves. We've had the dog park for several years, it's become quite popular, becoming more popular as days go by, it's a new membership. I'm asking for an agility course for the dogs to increase some of the interest in the activity there. Agility course, if you're familiar with it, is a course that dogs run sometime in competition, a lot of times just for good training and commands. So we've had some requests from some of the members, to go ahead and request that, I've talked to Mr. Parks, talked to Debbie, and I think things are in the works, it's a low-budget item, we don't ask for much, I think in 10 years, this is the first time I've been before you to ask for something. So if that can be a consideration, I'd help in any way for information that you need, and my committee will assist you also. So we thank you for your consideration, and hope we can do something.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Other public comments?
Good morning, I'm Phil Pocket, I live at Seven Quarter Staff Place. I have two questions. One, the, the first question has to do with Triple Crown subdivision that's under construction now. It was my understanding from the get-go that King Richard was not to be used as a construction entrance for the subdivision, and yesterday, there were several concrete mixers that went in, up and on, over the, over the last couple months, there's been other construction equipment that has utilized that road. I'm concerned about it, because it was repaved after the waterline extensions were done about two years ago. two years ago. And the other thing is a long quarterstaff for about a half, a quarter mile, there are all utility markings on the road. I'd like to know what those markings are there for or what project is going to happen on Quarterstaff.
What was your name again, sir?
My name is Bill Pocket.
So could you please leave your contact information? I will talk to the appropriate resources and get you an answer for that. Linda, could you take his contact information for me, please? And that way we'll get back to you. So there's two questions. Let me make sure I got it, that the King Richard construction being used as a construction site entrance and then the markings on Quarterstaff Road.
Right. It's not the construction entrance. I mean, they're coming off of Ocean Parkway to King Richard for access to it.
Okay, understood. I'll get you some answers. Thank you. Please, like I said, please provide Linda your contact information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Mark Thomas, 1132 Ocean Parkway. I'd like to welcome the new members. Well, thank you. John's doing a great job. Police department, great job on getting their new, we've still got a little bit of work to do with that. We're working our way forward with the fire department, which is great to see. Tiffany Knapp, very, very good point. The surfing community, the skateboard community would be really nice to have a young man's name after that park over there, after all the things that happened. That would be really, really a good gesture. I just want to point that out. The swimming pools, great, but I understand there's lifeguard shortage, but it's a mess. As in if you, you know, I signed up for a membership and, you know, and you go to the pool, it's not open, I get it, but something has to be done for the people with the memberships. I actually canceled my membership this year because it's not fair. You know, as hardworking, single parent with two kids, here I am, I paid the 600 and some dollars and it actually went up to 630 and then I went to pools and they were closed all June. Lifeguard shortage is cool, but the people that paid a lot of money for lifeguards in town, not that we have all kinds of money, had the people, you know, the Sunset Islands, people in other communities, my friends in California, all their pools were staffed. So I mean, I get it, there's lifeguard shortage, I get it, we're doing the best we can, I appreciate it, but something's got to be done with the pools and I thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Amy Pack, 109 White Horse Drive. I have written the directors and the election chair two times without a courtesy of a reply regarding the election numbers. Simply put, we have more votes than possible, given the number of ballots, anywhere from 450 to over 1,000 quote, extra votes. I'm hearing the position is too bad, the election has been certified. I'm hearing that there was a secret meeting Friday morning without all board members or candidates present and without notification and with possible recounting. It is a recipe for how to make a bad situation worse. So much for a promised transparency. Like every homeowner in Ocean Pines, I want my vote to count and election integrity is crucial. My emails requested information regarding the election number discrepancy and why the counting was not videotaped like the past two referendum countings and the 2019 election counting. I have included very specific recommendations and policy changes to ensure that this type of discrepancy never happens again. My emails pointed out two very large data gaps in the reporting, including one, no mention whatsoever of duplicate ballots. In a neighborhood where five husbands or wives requested a new ballot because they didn't agree with their spouse's choice, what are the extreme odds that no one voted both electronically and by mail, even by mistake? Two, given the number of ballots or the vote totals or both must be wrong, why were the number of ballots scanned and manually counted not spelled out? Why does the report include a remedy to follow MO6 and have the print mail contractor opening and separating ballots from the envelopes? Wasn't that done? Do the envelopes and ballot numbers even match? Why were there no categories for ballots rejected because there was an attempted write-in, voted for the allowance or no box was marked? Something is wrong and I simply want an explanation. Responding that the election has been certified already, doesn't matter that the numbers on the election report don't add up, is not sufficient. It stinks. It gives homeowners no confidence in electronic voting or any voting and it gives room for the talk of fraud, which really upsets me. Secret back, excuse me, sir, that is rude. I have the floor.
You're right, it's rude what you're saying too.
Excuse me, folks. No dialogue right now. She has the floor.
He's not saying sore loser.
No dialogue right now. She has the floor for comments. Thank you.
Secret backdoor meetings are not a good look. What was I as a candidate this time and what should future candidates do in the future? Must candidates stand up at the annual meeting and demand a recount because when they see the election report, the math is really wrong and the results might be wrong too? What a circus that would be. At the very least, my recommendation is that the election report must have all information I outlined in my email and it must be due prior to the annual meeting, not on October 31st, per resolution CO9. If the membership and the candidates are to have information necessary to help decide if they want to request a recount during the annual meeting, per resolution MO6, attachment A, section 11C. Bylaw section 501E states that the board may resolve a recount. Please do the right thing. Please do not interfere with the committee investigating and recounting and getting to the bottom of this mess. Be transparent. Committee, please consider my recommendations for future elections and changing the election report so checks and balances occur so this never happens again. Thank you.
Other public comments? All right, let me state for the record, excuse me, sir, one second, I'll recognize you in a second. Let me state for the record because it looks like there's some misinformation out there. Number one, on advice from counsel, when the issue was brought to our attention, counsel suggested that as a first step to have the elections committee recount the paper ballots and that was done. It was done with the full knowledge of the entire board. It was not a secret meeting. It needed to be done right away based on the availability of the elections committee folks and the availability of our attorney, who also attended that meeting. It was open, the door was open all the time, it wasn't secret. And what was found is that the paper ballots are accurate with regard to what was reported at the annual meeting. The counts of the paper ballot matched the counts of the ballots that were announced at the annual meeting. Under further advice from counsel, we're looking to see if there's any other discrepancies and that's where we stand on the matter right now. Okay? Now, apologies for my oversight if I called that. I wanted to wait until today before I responded to your email because I felt that maybe with this conversation that it would answer it. If you needed additional information, I don't have any more than I've given you right now, but certainly hope that this conversation meets your requirement of responding to you in kind with regard to your question on the election.
Do I understand you're saying that the election report numbers that we got were confirmed?
Let me say it again, all right? And I don't want to turn this into a debate or a conversation. Give you one piece of information. The ballot count, which is very distinctly different from the vote count. Counsel suggested that the ballots be counted. The ballots were counted and they matched the number of ballots that were reported at the annual meeting. That is a fact. Now, that's what we have at this point. He disagrees with.
How many lots voted? Bill, counter.
I'm not, I said we're not turning this into a conversation. I've given you the information, all right? Now, consider the matter.
Put it in the paper, John.
Okay. So I've answered your question, I've given you the courtesy of response. Appreciate the information. Other public comments?
Hey Tanner, 65 Skyline Court. Just a quick question or something I'd like to bring up for further review. I see later on the agenda, there's a proposal on spending $486,000 with the new golf carts. And my concern with that is that we're still, there's still been depreciated the old ones and I know it's down the road a little bit, right, John, before you're going to take them? But everything I'm hearing is these ones are, the ones that we've got now are in great shape. Indeed, they're, I guess they've got to be in great shape in order to return them, get some credit at the end. But the golf course is still, to get to the bottom line, losing money partly because you include the depreciation. So we're not making enough money essentially with golf to pay for golf carts and new mowers, that type of thing. So if it exists, we could save a lot of money if we hung on to these golf carts for a few more years. They're fully depreciated, will be, I guess, at the end of this year. Is that right, John?
I'm sorry?
Be fully depreciated at the end of this year. So then next year, it would be money in the bank that we would have left over. So and would get to that bottom line and save some money and I think we'd all like to do that. From what I've heard, the fate still, don't get used all that much, I guess, with even relative to other things. So I just like to throw that out to the board. I know it was done like with the previous board, but take a look at them again if it's possible, see if we can maybe work a deal for a little further down the road. You know, right now, they were, golf carts were in big demand, just like Peloton and everything else during the COVID situation. So hopefully down the years, a few more years down the road, we can actually pick them up for less money, particularly if you listen to what's going on with the Fed. Anyway, I don't know, just a suggestion, might save us some money and it's quite an outlay. So I just put that forward to the board consideration.
Thank you. Other public comments?
Gary Murray, 23 Berry. I just wanted a clarification on the election recounting that was done on Friday. You said all ballots were recounted. Are you referring to paper versus media?
Yes.
Is the electronic also counted?
That was never in question, according to the elections committee.
But I thought that there was no way to go back and redo anything with the recorded votes.
Said nothing's been redone. What I've stated is what happened.
So the electronic votes were recounted?
No, they were not.
Okay.
Other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close the floor for public comments. Next item of business, capital request. John?
Okay, thank you, Doug. So I'm coming forward with three. First one, Public Works, working with secondary road rehabilitation. I mentioned this earlier, I've been doing it for the last three years, four years since I've been here. Requesting authorization to go forward with staff recommendation of $363,122 and 90 cents Asphalt Maintenance LLC to do approximately three miles of road. This comes out of the road reserve.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the request for spending monies from the road reserve with asphalt maintenance LLC to do $363,122 and 90 cents. Or second?
I have some questions.
Second?
Second. Discussion?
We'll handle it in discussion.
That's fine.
All right. Is there a second?
Yes, I said second.
Discussion, Steve.
John, I admit I'm new at this.
That's fine.
So I did, in going through this, had a couple of questions. Why is it that in this particular, as compared to the other two estimates that you received?
Right.
Why is the unit price different, street by street? You know?
Compared to the other two companies?
Yeah.
That's part of the bid process. Nobody's going to be that deep in each one. Nobody said something specific. Honestly, I looked at the overall. I know this company, we know this company, we've done very well. I can't get that micro down.
Okay.
If you want, I will, but I don't think that's going to.
No, I assume there's.
Nothing major that, you know, one saw, and I understand what you're saying, one saw something and maybe the other one didn't. We didn't hear anything like that. And the other thing, just overall, and I'll know and I'll come forward on this, just like the other several years, our base is better than I ever thought. And the other nine miles or whatever we've done since I've been here, we haven't incurred anything out of the ordinary and I know that can always help. Sometimes they have to melt more than, you know, in others they can just put it over. But outside of that, okay, if something comes up, I will come forward with it.
Okay. Another question I have is, one of the estimates included an affidavit, but the other two did not.
Right.
Is there a reason for that?
So, you know, we ask, we ask for that. Sometimes we get them, sometimes we don't. Sometimes we may need, you know, we may need it, you know, with this company. We've been successful.
Okay. And last point, and I can do this because that would be the street on which I live. On Surfers Way, there have been two, I think, or three times where pipe has broken and the county has come in to repair it. And I'm, I think I'm correct in saying the repairs, at least on two of the occasions, were temporary. I don't know if that's going to affect the paving. I mean, Surfers Way is a small street, anyway, it's just a little cul-de-sac. But I just want to make sure that whatever the county did is not going to affect the paving that you're going to have done and/or it's not worth it to do it until the county makes a permanent fix. I just call that to your attention.
Yeah, no, we'll do. I wrote it down. You're right, you're right, Steve.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing else, thank you.
Other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Hold on a minute.
I just had a quick question because there's almost a $300,000 difference between the top bid and the low bid. You know, I think Steve was just basically asking, this is apples for apples.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. I believe it's what we need and it's apples to apples from what we've done in the past, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Absolutely. We've gotten crazy bids, especially during this period, nothing that I know of, ask, we will check it, but there's, we've gotten big time differences. Sometimes, a lot of times the contractors don't need the work, they're busy and they'll give us a number and then you jump at it, you know? That's my answer to you. That's what I believe, yeah. But we noted that, I'll double check.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. I was in favor of approving the expense of $363,122 and 90 cents for road rehabilitation from Asphalt Maintenance LLC. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Please record a unanimous vote. Next item, John?
Sorry, Doug. Marina, I talked a little bit about this earlier, the replacement of the gas lines and fuel dispensers to include a fuel management system. Requesting authorization to go forward with staff recommendation of $169,520 and 56 cents for petrol supply company. Basically replace, bring up to standard, up to mandatory requirements, gas lines and the pumps.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the expense of $169,520 and 56 cents for petrol supply.
Motion. Second?
Or second?
Second.
Discussion. I have a question. John, just for point of interest, this was not in the budget, but it was, it does come out of replacement, just a.
You're right, Doug, and I should have said that. You're right, this was not in the budget, but definitely comes out of replacement.
Just so the general public understands that sometimes you run into a situation where you can't predict that that's going to happen, but that requirement comes upon you, therefore, you know, you do have to take action right away. It wasn't budgeted, but we certainly have the funds in our reserve fund to cover this expense.
Yeah, definitely. And it's pretty much in line with the, just two things that I should have said. One, like I said, we had, we had a problem there, that we had a breakdown, but also sometime around June, the requirements changed and we would have had to meet this. And one other point, because I will be coming forward probably in a later board meeting, this does not include the docks. Obviously we have to replace the system. That is something that would be more money than this. Those docks, or that dock right there, I believe a C dock, is in the DMA study for replacement anyway, over the next year or two. So I'll be coming forward on that. So it doesn't include that, but thank you on the $169,000.
Other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question.
One question, I'm sorry.
Please prompt.
John, how many bids did you get on that?
Okay, so we reached out to three companies. Having in front of me, the second company, Delmarva Petro, we really thought we were going to get a bid from them. They told us they were going to bid, they were the first one we were going with. They never actually supplied us with a bid. Yes, we dealt with them for a couple of months. I really thought they were the ones that were going to bring in a bid. I really thought they were the ones that were going to bring in a bid. The third one said they were going to bid, but I'm running out of time because I got to get this in before Memorial Day. They never gave us a bid. I checked yesterday. Yeah, so we did try. This one, this company, I got to say, Ron, they're very familiar with us as well as MDE. So I think, yeah, no, you're right.
Any other discussion?
Doug.
Frank.
Is it factually correct that if these would have been, if these lines would have been done differently during the original construction that you got from this would have been avoided?
Oh, no, it's a good question. So let me answer that in two parts. If this had been done, and you're right, they did everything back then, I'm not saying they did anything wrong. They did everything from the gas tanks, they moved the, the supply tanks, all that piping and everything, all the way right up to the beginning of the dock, they did. They did not go from, which is what we're doing here. They did not go from, from land to the pumping station. So if they had done that, I believe I wouldn't have had the breakdown that I did. I don't know exactly what the change in requirements under regulation that happened in June, if I still would have met it. I'm not sure. My guess is we probably would have put, I'm not sure.
Any other discussion? CNN, I'll call the question. All is in favor of approving the expense of $169,520 and 56 cents for replacement of gas lines and fuel dispensers, Petro Supply Incorporated. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Please record a unanimous vote. John, next item, please.
Okay. CPI violations, what? I'm sorry, administrator. I'm sorry, Doug, but I got it. Okay, so administration building renovations, requesting authorization to go forward in leading in-house renovations for approximately $125,000. All the items, and I'll mention them again, but all the items I mentioned earlier are all in placement DMA study, all basically, and especially the major, major ones, all ready for replacement and should be. This will be done in-house with Prestige, which are our plumbers and HVAC company that we use all the time. So they're part of our team. We will use the same design that we've used in the past, and basically all the work will be done by Public Works. But this will be done between October and January, requesting $125,000 for renovation admin building.
I'll entertain a motion to approve an expense of $125,000 for renovations to the administration building.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. CNN, I'll call the question. All is in favor of approving the $125,000 for renovations to the administration building? Please say aye.
Aye.
I did enough, excuse me.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Okay, thank you very much, and I will.
Thank you, John.
Run the two questions on the roads.
Next item on the agenda, CPI violations. We have none reported for this month. Next item of business on the agenda is unfinished business. We have none from previous board meetings. Next item of business on our agenda is new business. First is discussion of Worcester County Water and Wastewater Treatment Facility. Monica?
So background, for those that might not know, rake head broke off and became lodged in a pipe. So note that changes have been made to the rake, a bigger rake head, and it's now one-piece construction. That should make it big enough that that issue should not happen again. The result, though, the waste treatment plant missed the discharge permit, permit limits for the release of nitrogen. Fees in roughly the amount of $540,000 were levied against the county. In a five to two vote, the county commissioners approved a $540,000 grant, county money that was earmarked for Ocean Pines, to pay the fees to the state. Commissioners Bertino and Bunting were opposed, arguing the money should have come from the county's general fund. Since March, meetings and discussions have been taking place at the county level to see OPA is compensated for the processing of truck in sewage. More details will be available in coming months, but at this time, no further discussion is warranted until we get that additional information.
Any other discussion on the topic?
Yeah, if I may, I'm just sort of curious. When you say there have been meetings, who has been attending these meetings?
At the county.
Who from Ocean Pines has been attending these meetings?
No one, at this point.
Okay, so then, I guess, are we assuming at this point that Commissioner Bertino is representing the interests of Ocean Pines? Is that a fair assumption? I don't know, I'm just asking.
In my opinion, absolutely.
Yes.
And Commissioner Bunting as well.
Yes, I agree.
Colette. So how is this going to get paid for?
It's coming out of a reserve from the county's money that was earmarked for Ocean Pines. So there won't be any rate increase, that was the reason for paying it upfront, so there would not be a rate increase to the rate payers.
And so how does that, excuse me, sorry. How does that reserve fund get funded? Where do those monies come from?
Question?
I'll rescind Roberts' rules of order. John, please.
So first of all, compliments to Monica having a meeting and everything in approach. So, and you're right on the question, Colette, the answer I received was they do have a plan on how to fund it. I prefer that they say it, they being the commissioners. They did say it wouldn't be part of a rate increase, which Monica heard. I believe it's, what I heard corrected, but again, we should ask them. It's about charging for the money, charging for the work they're doing for Glenn Riddle. Hi.
Well, you're on so.
No, no worries.
Excuse us.
So they do have some ideas, they did mention some. One of them was the, I guess, the waste that they've been caught over, that they caught it off from Glenn Riddle, that would replace it by billing for that. But again, please, let's, I'll get it in right from them.
So you're saying there will not be a rate increase?
Well, I'm not, I'm not a county commissioner, it's not under me. I'm just telling you what, when Monica asked the questions, what I heard, and I substantiate it with Monica's telling you she heard.
So it sounds like we don't really know yet how that.
We got an answer.
And it's going to be reunded.
I could say that they were saying it wasn't going to be the $60 increase, they had other methods of funding back that reserve. One idea, or one, I don't want to call it an idea, one thing I believe I heard and Monica heard was that on the waste being courted over, they were going to charge for that.
Steve?
Yeah, a couple of questions. This supposed $60 rate increase, this is a problem that was over in Glenn Riddle. I mean, that's the, the cause of the problem is what occurred in Glenn Riddle, is that correct?
No, it was caused due to an employee, a rake head coming off the handle.
I understand that's what, that was in Glenn Riddle, right?
No, it was here.
Here?
Yes.
Okay. But we, but it was, I guess.
Sewages being trucked in from Glenn Riddle.
Right.
To here.
Okay.
So, so Stephen, if I may, so somebody just sent me the actual, actually it was Josh is helping me out here. We, I have the actual quote from the commissioners and everything, where they're basically saying that there will not be an increase, which is what Monica reported and what I heard Monica here. There will be no additional assessment on the individual rate payer quarterly bills.
Say that again?
It says there, hold on one second, I'm sorry. Says there will be no additional assessment on the individual rate payer quarterly bills, which is what Monica's telling you she heard, which I heard. I understand Colette's question or yours is, okay, then how will they fund that reserve? You're taking it, you're peeling back. I'm just, I'm just telling you what we heard, I believe I heard, and again, we will reach out to the commissioners, make sure it comes from them, it shouldn't be come from Monica or myself, but they said that they have other ways of putting that money back. It's a great question that both of you are asking. What I heard was they were going to charge for this other waste, which apparently they weren't, this other waste treatment.
My other question is this. Where were you and Monica when you heard this?
We were in my office.
I'm sorry?
We were in the GM office.
Well, I, when I asked before, who from Ocean Pines had a meeting?
Okay.
And I was told, I was told nobody was.
Okay, so Steve, and I got to be honest with you, and again, it's up to Monica too. What I believe I heard, what I thought you were saying, which I think Monica thought, was all the meetings at the county level and all that, what happened was Monica had these questions, I thought they were excellent questions and everything, and I just felt, let's ask them, so we know before we come into this type of meeting. So it was just an informal meeting, just asking the question that Monica had on her motion, and I thought that that certainly helped Monica and all of us bring this information forward.
Well, let me just say, in the future.
County.
In the future, if you're going to have these sort of meetings, I would like to know, I'm not saying I would attend them, I'd at least like to know about them.
Okay, I would always do that. I got to be careful, I can't have four of you there, correct? So I just thought Monica, she had the motion, figured that was, Monica, which is what Monica and Doug are doing, I got to be honest, I think, but I didn't see what you're saying. I will do that.
Thank you.
Duly noted.
Thank you. Yeah, so first, as a rate payer, I mean, when this discussion just came out, I mean, I share the angst that everybody in this room does, okay, with potential $60 increase. I think it's important to understand, we have absolutely nothing to do with the operation of that system.
It's nothing to do with that, thank you.
Okay, each development, this county, as I understand the law, has its own waste treatment and water facility. That development pays the rate for that facility. When something comes up down at this facility, like losing a rake inside a piece of operating equipment, and it causes something to go south, whether we like it or not up here, or whether we like it or not as rate payers with you, we can do nothing about it. Our commissioners did exactly what, in my opinion, as, as a voter, they should have done. They went to bat for us and they said, look, nobody in Ocean Pines caused this problem, Ocean Pines shouldn't pay for it. The other commissioners said, yes, but outside of Ocean Pines, nobody in the county should pay for it. So I think it's important to understand that this is one deal that, you know, it's kind of like what goes on down in Snow Hill stays down there. That's out of our lane, and we have no control over it, except to say, as individuals, we think, as individual voters within the county, this is what we think you should do. So I don't want anybody to leave thinking that the board is proposing to tell the commissioners to do anything, because that's, that ends up in a canyon with a rock slide falling on us.
Right.
Other discussion on the matter? I will read state Roberts' rules of order. Next item on the agenda is review of proposal to retrofit the North Gate sign. Steve?
Thank you. Communications Committee has obtained, actually, I believe it's two estimates for the cost of installing one electronic sign controlled, lack of a better term, digitally. There are some differences in the estimates, the specs. Other than that, it's a difference of about $1,000. This would be the only sign introduced, that would be involved at this time. I believe the packet includes a mock-up of what the sign would look like. If you recall the sign at the north entrance, or I get this correctly, this, the, as you look at the sign, the current, currently the map is on the left side, information's on the right side, this would flip it. And the Communications Committee is prepared, when, if the board so desires, to arrange for a presentation and to answer all of the related questions that would flow from that. I am told that this issue has come up, maybe not formally, but has come up before the board in the past, and the primary issue was one relating to county zoning and county regulations, the current signs we have and what the new signs entail and that sort of thing. From what I am told, those issues with the county have all been resolved with the help of Commissioner Bertino, among others. At one point, there was a waiver granted, I assume, although I don't know for sure that the waiver has since expired. But the idea is, this is one sign that would be installed with the approval of the board. The committee does have an interest, at least, in getting this on the radar for the upcoming budget, which is why we're making the, we have the charging document today, but I'd say the committee and the contractor, if the board assumes that'd be the appropriate person, would be willing to make a presentation.
Other discussion? Frank?
So Steve, this has come up in the past, and these electronic signs, like a, an expenditure in search of a mission. There's, in the, in the past, the committee has said it could be for emergency notification, but that didn't work out. It looks like it's nothing more than we don't like the old and we want something new, which I perfectly understand. I mean, I go through that in my house, okay, all the time. But here's the deal, $21,000 for this sign. If you go out and you look at how that sign is maintained, one person goes out and they change the letters, I believe I've seen that letter changed weekly, okay? It would take years to recover the $21,000 that we're going to spend to change, to get the same message to people. So I, I don't see it as timely. We have a database that Josh sends emails, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, and I'll ask the suspend rules. I believe that database that Josh sends out emails to has 12,000 emails in it.
I'll suspend Roberts' rules.
Yeah, he, I don't know if it's exactly 12,000, but he does have a huge database. I understand what you're saying, you're right.
I mean, so here's $21,000 for a sign, and here's a database that goes out to 12,000 people that can get the same information with a keyboard. And I just, I mean, I think that there are other things that we don't do that we could spend $21,000 on, that's a better expenditure. I mean, that's the bottom line for this. And it keeps coming back, and it's like, I think one of the things that I saw, correct me if I'm wrong, was, well, at least we'll see what the sign looks like. Well, I'll tell you what, on that same intersection, which I pass probably five times a day, when you make a left turn to go down Ocean Parkway, if you look off to the right, there is one of these signs from a realtor. And I think it's, I think it's pretty tacky, I myself, but that's their sign, it's commercial operation, they can do it. I don't think we need to see a sign 25 feet down the road that looks like the sign on the right corner. And I just, like I say, I would rather spend, I mean, look, let me be really blunt, we had a motion, or somebody's talked with us about renaming the skate park, put the $21,000 in the skate park, because I can see people use it, I can see more benefit to it, and it's understandable for the community. The sign, I don't see any of that.
Colette?
Yeah, your points are well taken, Frank. There are a couple of other issues, I think, that need to be considered. The timeliness of the messaging, we've all driven past that sign when it's had old news on it, and the new news isn't there. Excuse me. The unsightlyness, I don't see that it would be as unsightly as those commercial signs. Judging from the picture, it looks like a very tasteful use of that medium to get messages across. But the most important issue to me is staff safety. The process of changing that message involves a staff member opening up the front of that case, which weighs who knows how many pounds, propping it up with a two-by-four, so that they can swap out those letters. I'm very concerned about staff safety with respect to that process. I don't like seeing our staff members out there with the traffic, going back and forth, wrestling with a two-by-four to make it possible for them to put those, that message up. And I think it's a good field test for whether, and that's only one of the many signs that they're wrestling with in this old-fashioned messaging approach. I would like to see us consider this. I would like to see us have a town hall meeting to bring it to the public. Okay, the, what this, let the manufacturers give us a presentation, so that the public can see exactly what this will look like, and to have discussion of this being a field test for the replacement of other signs that our staff are struggling with, to change the messaging once a month. That's once a month or once a week. I think we have 13 signs. And the idea here was to eliminate some of those signs, have timely messaging in key areas that, in a medium, that did not pose safety hazard to our staff.
Other discussion, Stuart?
I think that we're looking at a want versus a need. If the concern's safety for our employees replacing the lettering on the signs, I don't know, maybe we can have Public Works put a hinge on the side and fix that, but I, I don't personally see the need. You might want something, but I don't think it's needed. It might be tasteful, but I think this is an expense. It might be tasteful, but I think this is an expense that is unwarranted.
Other discussion.
If I may, I think everyone's obviously entitled to their opinion. At this point, all the committee is seeking is the opportunity to make a suitable presentation with the appropriate expertise to the board. They may not change opinions one way or the other.
More times, the Communications Committee has brought this above, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Stephen, I'm sorry, Steve.
My understanding is, this has not been, this sort of presentation has not been done before the board. The subject has come up at different times, I grant that point. And the suggestion is that we just have the opportunity to make the presentation. At some point, everyone has to vote and make a decision, one way or the other. I don't know, with all due respect to Frank, that this is necessarily an either-or proposition between the sign and the skate park, and some people may want to look at it that way. But at this point, I think it's fair to say, board does not have sufficient information to make that determination one way or the other, because no one's made a presentation yet. You haven't had the contractor come in, he hasn't shown you what the sign will look like, hasn't addressed the issue of safety for the employees of Ocean Pines, none of that's been done. We all have opinions, but none of it's been done. So all that's been requested at this point is the opportunity to make a presentation.
Other discussion. Frank?
Yeah, I'm perfectly okay with the discussion. I don't remember, but I believe it was a motion that came before the board before, for the signs, and I believe the number was $321,000. Okay, but, I'm okay for the presentation and getting the expertise in, but I think the committee should understand that, at least from my point of view, when we're talking $21,000, and I appreciate the safety concern, somebody should, somebody better be prepared to tell me what it would cost to retrofit the signs to make them safe and compare it to $21,000. I think, I think as long as the committee understands that and that's part of the discussion, it's fair game. I mean, because we should always explore new ideas, I'm not blocking that, but there's a difference between exploring new ideas and spending on things that aren't financially justifiable.
Other discussion. I have a comment. The notion of a town hall meeting is intriguing. We had committed to having town hall meetings this year, hopefully at least two, perhaps that is one of the items we could at least have as a potential topic for discussion at a town hall meeting. I would also share the want versus need, you know, when I look at expenses, I look at them solving a problem, you know, addressing an issue that could be a deficiency or improvement over, you know, existing conditions. I'm not sure I see that, however, you know, certainly the floor is open for discussion, and I would like to hear other opinions on it, perhaps even to the point where we asked the committee to consider a, you know, a survey, you know, go back to the Strategic Planning Committee. I don't have the information memorized, but I'm not sure that we saw a lot of interest in, you know, from the strategic planning, that was an item that needed to be addressed, it was something on the, you know, sphere of consciousness of the folks, you know, within the association that says, hey, we have to address this. So there's some open questions, I think some dialogue on this is good. I will also, Frank, just, and Steve, I know you knew, that issue had come up and it was turned down based on cost and, you know, the sort of return on investment issue, but that doesn't preclude us from bringing it up again, so. Colette?
Yeah, and I think if we do go the town hall route, I would like to see, it's intriguing for us to consider other, other ways of solving the safety problem for the staff that may be less costly. So I think we want to definitely include that in the discussion, have that groundwork done.
Other discussion. Roberts' rules are still rescinded. John?
Doug, thank you, and, you know, Director Lackonik brought it up, and now I hear Colette saying it, and Frank, and I'll stay out of the board stuff, but I am going to look at it, I'll meet with the team on Monday to see in the meantime what we can do to making opening that more safer, or safer, and see if we can do hinges or something different like Director Lackonik said. So I'll do that as a takeaway from, the rest is, I'll look at that.
I'll entertain one more comment. Seeing none, I'll reinstate Roberts' rules. Thank you for the discussion. Next item on the agenda. This motion authorized change in contract agreement for the purchase of golf carts, the purpose and effect is to formally document the change in contract terms for the purchase of the golf carts that were already approved at a previous board meeting, and the background is a contract that was approved at a previous board meeting and authorized the purchase of the new golf carts. The GM reported that due to the updates from the vendors, the costs have changed regarding both the price of the carts and the trade-in value of our existing fleet of carts. These changes net out, and the original purchase value and expenses associated with the contract remains the same as stated in the original agreement. The motion is simply to recognize the document and updates to the original agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion to authorize the change in contract agreements for the purchase of the golf carts, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Please record a unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is a request for reserve transfers. I will again rescind Roberts' rules. John?
Thank you, Doug. Okay, new business reserve transfer. Requesting permission for team recommendation to transfer from realized budget favorability for fiscal year 2122, the following items. Put that favorability that we had, the 1.9 plus change favorability that was now realized with the closing of the year from the auditors. Mailbox maintenance and replacement, I'd like to add, to pay for it for $150,000 from that recognized, realized favorability. Pickleball renovation existing court, $75,000. I did have a timing situation last year, I could not get the contractors in there, certain type of material or whatever, now requesting $75,000 transfer from the 1.914 favorability that was realized. And also the road reserve, $350,000. I mentioned that we are going to spend approximately that, 340, I got approval for it today. I want to, we want, as tasked by the board and BNF, get that reserve fund up to around $100,000, so putting that 350, we're well on our way. Requesting basically $575,000 transfer from the 1.9 million rounded favorability, that will leave me a zero favorability of 1.3.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the requested transfers of $150,000 to the mailbox maintenance fund, $75,000 for pickleball, and $350,000 to the road reserve, for a total of a $575,000 transfer from the 1.9 million that was seen as a surplus from the previous fiscal year, based on...
Vote.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes.
Colette?
I just want to comment that the outstanding performance of our operations team and the revenues that were realized from our amenities and the aggregate are making it possible for us to do what I would consider a historic transfer into reserves, and I know there was a comment earlier that golf is not paying for its own depreciation, but this is an example of how the aggregate positive variance, the strong performance of our amenities, is indeed funding our reserves. And the historic funding of road reserves, which we have not done in the past, and the mailbox debacle that we inherited, there was no money in reserves for our mailbox replacement, and as a result of this very strong performance, we're now funding that. And I want to applaud our operations team, and the operators of our amenities, for helping us realize this opportunity.
I have a comment, so, two things, number one, you know, I think this is a great example of taking that surplus and applying it in a very practical manner. BNF, Budget and Finance Committee, had recommended over the past several years that we fund the road reserves at a much higher rate, because we were basically doing a pay-as-you-go. We knew that there was about three miles' worth of roads that'd be repaired, and we were spending in an aggregate of about 350K annually on that, and we really wanted to get that fund built up. The second part of it is that, one of the reasons we didn't have any reserve fund is because the mailboxes were not part of the Ocean Pines assets. We acquired them based on some discussions that we had with the post office about ownership, and because of the performance of, you know, the operational environment and the amenities, we're now able to not really kind of pass that requirement to fund a, the mailboxes to the membership, right, to actually use the overage, you know, to fund that without any effect on the membership. So again, it's those kinds of things that are the practical aspect of having an overage and using it in a very practical manner. Other discussion. Frank?
Yeah, I'd like to just kind of echo what Colette Horn said. It's a lot more fun setting up here dealing with a operating surplus than a $2.16 million operating deficit, that I sat down in my first meeting and had to deal with. And in that time, to John Viola's credit and to his team's credit, every amenity in this association has moved basically from a loss position to a profit position, a net operating profit position. And now the challenge is, it's kind of like making it to the Super Bowl, once you're there, repeating. And one thing as a board, and one thing I think each of you have to be committed to, is don't go backwards. And hold us to account, so that we don't go backwards.
Other discussion. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of approving the transfer of funds, I won't read it again, we've got that digit, have it down. Transfer of funds requested by the general manager, all those in favor of approving the transfer of funds, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Record a unanimous vote. That covers all of our new business. Next item on the agenda is appointments. So, a couple of things. One is, I'm torn between the notion of how we did it in the past, where we look at all of the appointments and request that, you know, we consider all them as a batch of individuals, versus bringing them out one by one, all right? I don't have a strong preference one way or the other, so I'm going to look to my board colleagues and say, I'll start the conversation by saying, I'd like to consider approval of all of these appointments unless someone has a concern about any single one of the appointments that are here. Or is there, so let's start with that, and if I get a shutdown, then we'll do it one by one. Reasonable, reasonable approach?
I think we should do it, I agree with you, we should do it as a group, as a batch.
Okay, now, point of order. Certainly if, when we get into the discussion part of it, you still have an opportunity to look at somebody and say, before we do it, I'm not going to vote because I want some information on said individual, right? And that allows us to take another look at it and say, by the way, I'm not comfortable with voting all the way through, and perhaps we can consider, with further discussion, to pull that one out and maybe do them all, you know, except for that one, do that one separately. Fair enough. Colette?
Yeah, I agree with that approach.
Okay, all right. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the following appointments. David Allen for second-term chair of the Marine Activities Committee, Pam Ferendy, first-term of Bylaws and Resolutions Committee, Patricia Garcia, first-term Environmental and Natural Assets Committee, Mark Keitz, first-term Elections Committee, Keith Kaiser, second-term Bylaws and Resolutions Committee, Susan Morris, Chair of the Racket Sports Committee, Laura Pangrass, Chair of Bylaws and Resolutions Committee, Araceli Poppen, first-term Racket Sports Committee, Ryan Reynolds, second-term Budget Finance Committee, and George Soljak, second-term Budget Finance Committee. I'll entertain a motion to accept all of those appointments.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of accepting the appointments as previously read, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Please record a unanimous vote. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Minus adjourned, thank you.